Good evening and welcome to the May thirteenth, twenty twenty five Regular Board Meeting of Selma Unified School Districts. And we are now in reconvent in our open session. Roll call. Mr. Fedor?
Here.
Mrs. Kessler?
Here.
Mrs. Dorte?
Here.
Mr. Medina?
Here.
And I'm here myself. Please stand for a flag salute. Stella, could you lead us?
Mayor, okay, it's gonna be. Brent, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission under guard, individual with the victims of justice.
Thank you. Report from closed sessions. We're in a closed session. The board didn't take any actions. We will be continuous in our closed session after the regular board meeting. And score report. Student representative from Selma High School, Alyssa Salazar.
Good evening. Last week, we hosted our annual student versus staff basketball game with the staff winning by one point. We also celebrated our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. Our ASB team gave out certificates for each teacher and even made personalized posters for them. This past weekend, our junior officers and junior advisors put on Enchantment on the Nile Prom twenty twenty five at the Grand Ballroom with over three hundred in attendance. The night was filled with fun, food, pictures, and lots of dancing. Our seniors are getting ready for senior finals and getting ready for our last events, such as scholarship night, senior sunset, grad night at Universal Studios, senior breakfast, grad walks, and senior checkout. Now for athletic report. As the spring season has come to an end, the varsity baseball and softball team are awaiting the CIF brackets for playoffs that are starting May sixteenth this Friday. Last Friday, May ninth, Selma High School honored the class of sixty-five through sixty-eight, four-time Valley Championship teams. The night started with a barbecue for the team members and then a ceremony by Dan Taylor, director Fresno Hall of Fame director. Friday, we have a seven, we have seven track qualifiers running at Reedley High School for CIF postseason qualifier. Thanks again for our support this Bar Nation score year, as we hope to have another section champion coming soon. Lastly, I would like to thank the board and the SCSD Executive Cabinet for welcoming and supporting me this year through each board meeting. Now that it's over, I'm confident in leaving you in good hands with our twenty twenty-six ASB Board Rep, Alyssa Zenchin.
Thank you very much. We have from ALMS Lonnie Perez or Casey Berry.
Good evening. My name is Casey Berry, the Abraham Lincoln Middle School ASB Vice President, and this is the ALMS school report. State testing. We have been state testing for the past three weeks, and we still have two weeks left to go. This week and next week, we are testing in math classes. Students who focus, have good attendance, and use test-taking strategies are possibly eligible to attend the Casp movie incentive on May twenty-ninth. Mental health week. Last week was mental health awareness week. There were lunch activities, and the dress-up days were, you are strong, wear your active clothes, you are not alone, twin up, we all need a sidekick, wear your favorite superhero or sidekick T-shirt, stay connected, wear green for mental health awareness, and feel good Friday, show your school pride and wear your ALMS gear.
I'm Lonnie Perez, the ASB president, and this is a reminder of the ALMS school report. Summer fun week. Next week is summer fun week. The theme is say aloha to summer break, a nod to Lilo and Stitch. There are lunch activities and dress-up days daily, including beach ball, volleyball, a hoop contest, and beachcombing. Tuesday, everyone is encouraged to wear Hawaiian shirts and dress on dresses. On Thursday, lay sunglasses and sun hats. And on Friday, ohana means family, so wear your ALMS gear. Thursday is also soak the staff a lunch, come out and have some fun with us. End of the year events. Be sure to check out the ALMS website calendar for a complete list of upcoming events. This includes the eighth grade dance, the yearbook signing party, academic awards, which also include the Eagle Award, principal's medallion, and presentation of CJSF courts. The summer grade incentive activity will take place on campus, the eighth grade trip to Blackbeards, and the promotion ceremony. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. We're gonna move into student performance. We have first one is a student case showcase, Garfield Elementary.
So actually, I want to just real quick, you just heard from the student board representatives, and I want to tonight to thank them and recognize them for their amazing work as being student reps. A special thank you to Alyssa, who's been here from the high school and being our student rep. She also helped me on Saturday. It was Mother's Day, and I took my parents and my in-laws, we took them to dinner in Fresno. And we saw all these kids who are dressed up in prom, dressed all with their parents, other friends hanging out, taking pictures. And then I left the restaurant, and we wanted to take a nice picture with my parents, you know. Mother's Day is a very special thing for us, and I, we looked for someone to take a picture. My, I think my daughter or my wife gave you a phone to say, hey, excuse me, can you take a picture of us? And there was Alyssa right there. And then I noticed that there were other Selma students, so it was nice running into our Selma students, and thank you for taking a picture of us on that night. I appreciate it. And thank you for everything you do. And I want to give you something special, Alyssa, on behalf of Selma Unified. And Manny and Casey, can you guys come up also? Thank you guys for everything you guys do for us. Truly appreciate it and welcome. Alyssa also? Oh, this is just too easy now. Perfect. Well, welcome, and we look forward to having you out here. Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the student showcase. Garfield is here. I see all the families and students. So tonight, we're excited to feature Garfield Elementary as our student showcase. Garfield second graders have been working with a theater teacher every Friday, exploring the world of theater through an engaging program. They are preparing to play a thing called Miss Armour's Talent Show. The students have also been developing their storytelling skills using puppets, which will be highlighted at their, at their upcoming presentation. It's fantastic opportunity for our young students to build confidence, creativity, and collaboration skills. Please welcome Principal Lena Huffman and Garfield's second graders up front and their teachers. Thank you, guys. Come on up.
Oh, no, it is. Thank you, Mr. Gomes. I'm pretty sure you handled the introduction for me very nicely. But we are so excited to work in collaboration with the Fresno Arts Council this year. At Garfield, we like to invest in the hearts and minds of our students, and this is one fabulous way to do this through our Prop twenty-eight funding with visual and performing arts funding. So, you know, we've seen confidence grow, and we've loved to just foster that creativity while enhancing their critical thinking skills. So on to the fun stuff. Join me in welcoming Ms. Armour, her students, and Ms. Davian Thompson from the Fresno Arts Council.
Hello, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Davian Thompson. I work from the Fresno Arts Council. This is one of my classes from Garfield Elementary. This is our lovely teacher Lori. I've been paired with them since the beginning of February. And we have learned about character creation using puppets. That's why they all have their puppets up here. And we've also learned about really critical things about theater. What is theater? What are the components of theater? So to explain this to you, we have a couple of our children that are playing the role of director. We've got Olivia, and we have Rachel, please step out. Wyatt and Hayden are the dressers. And Frederico, you are the understudy. And Mackie, you're the actor. So I'm gonna go around and I'm gonna ask them some questions so that they can show you how much they've learned. Hello, young lady, what is your name?
My name is Mackie.
And what do you do in this production?
Act. I, I listen to the instructions from my director.
Very good. Well, nice to meet you. And this lovely lady, what is your name?
My name is Rachel.
And what do you do for our show?
I tell people, the actors, what to do on stage.
Oh, so that must make you the?
Director.
Very good. Nice to meet you, Rachel. And you are?
Hello, everyone. My name is Olivia Rain.
And what do you do for this show?
I am the director. My job is to tell the actors what to do on stage, and I lead the group in acting exercises. I am the director.
Very nice. And you, sir, what is your name?
Frederick.
And what do you do for the show?
I am an understudy.
And what does an understudy do?
I field and, and for actors if they can perform.
Oh, wow, you have a really important role. Very nice to meet you. And you, sir, what is your name?
My name is Wyatt.
And what do you do for the show?
I'm a dresser, and I dress the actors and sometimes even the directors.
Wow, it's very important. And you, ma'am, what is your name?
Hayden Childress.
And what do you do for the show?
I dress the actors. I put on their costumes.
Very good. Well, thank you. You can get, you can stay right there where you are. So as you can see, not with any coaching, and we have little carts for them. They remembered exactly what they were and what they do. These actors are going to be performing a little show for you. It's called Miss Armour's Talent Show. They are in an enchanted forest looking for a pot of gold, and they're gonna search for the rainbow. So if you guys can help them do that, that would be great. Like if you see where it is and they're coming towards you, be like, over there. Are you guys ready? My directors, can you step forward, please, and get your people ready? Oh, my goodness, thank you. Thank you so much. So as you can see, arts is very important, especially at the elementary level. It teaches them collaboration, coordination, helps with their memory, and it gives them an outlet when they've had a stressful day. So if you're voting on anything tonight, vote to keep our grant so we can continue to have this program for these amazing students. Can we give it up one more time for Garfield? Thank you so much for letting us have your time.
Thank you. What a great performance by our students, and we truly appreciated the teachers, and especially the parents that, you know, making them, you know, learn this arts is amazing. Thank you. Now we're gonna go into the second special recognition of Selma High School ROTC.
Yes, thank you. And for our Garfield families and students, we'll have some refreshments here when we're done with the student showcases and the, and the music program. So you guys can hang out just a little bit more. So yeah, just when you thought we had enough Valley Championships, well, here we go again. So now to highlight an outstanding achievement from our Selma High MJ ROTC students. Back in March, the MJ ROTC marksmanship team won the Central Excellence, including their recent trip to the Marine Corps Nationals in Anston, Alabama in February. Out of more than five hundred teams across the nation that complete, competed for this qualification, Selma High was one of the only twenty-four teams to advance to the national stage. I'd like to invite First Sergeant Romero and the marksmanship team up to the front for recognition of their outstanding achievements.
Center stage.
There you go.
All right. I've been working here since two thousand nine. Took over for, some of you may still know, major hand for the marksmanship team. Before COVID, our marksmanship team was a top ten national team. We would go to the Nationals, we would go to Junior Olympics. We would actually travel two to three times out of state, going to Alabama, Ohio, Utah, and Arizona. After COVID, we've run into some roadblocks. We're slowly getting over to roadblocks. We've made improvements on our range. We just got a grant last year, so we've upgraded our range to electronic targets, which is what they actually compete on at the national level. I'm waiting on word for another grant to expand our range. And then for the first time, hopefully next school year, we will host these, it'll be a second-year host in the state, but it'll be the first time in the Central Valley, we will be hosting a partial electronic and paper target competition that will consist of both the state level and at the Central Valley. The team here is all freshmen and juniors, so if they decide to come back, they will do so. Some don't, some already told me they won't be back, but that's okay. I can, I can still build on that. Last year, we had a really good shot of winning the Central Valley. They went to Utah twice. And did you go to Utah last year? Yeah, so we went to Utah twice. The second time we went to Utah was for Western Regionals. They did very well over there, but then when we came back here the following week, they must have been tired from all the traveling, and they underperformed. We ended up in third place. This year, when we came back from Alabama, we only had a couple of weeks to prepare for the Valley, and this time, they weren't gonna underperform, they weren't gonna let themselves down, and they came through real well. We have Valentino Valle, a junior. We have Alexander French, freshman. We have Sidney Orozco, junior. I should have you guys introduce yourselves, shouldn't I? They, they don't want to. I'm gonna mess up her name. Anai Delgado, she's a sophomore. I'm gonna skip her for, I'm gonna skip her. Then we got Azul Estrada, and she is a sophomore. Now I'm gonna go back to her. This is Dulce Gallardo, and she is our junior. And this year, in her last two matches, one at the Central Valley, and then we went one more time up to North, where there's a different classification of shooting. She accomplished defeat. You want to go and tell them what you did? No? Okay. So at the national competitions, not only do they shoot for team, they also shoot individuals. To be in the top eight as, as a national individual, you have to be, your score needs to be around five forty-five to five fifty out of six hundred points. At our Central Valley Championship, she ended up shooting a five fifty-one. That helped us to take first place. Normally. Normally, something like that'll happen, and then the next time they compete, then their score drops down dramatically. Was it a week later, two weeks later? A week? A week later, we went up to Lincoln, California. She goes up there, and she shot a five fifty-five. Five, excuse me, five fifty-seven. And her score, they, we have two classifications. We have sporter and precision. And precision shooters, real quick, they shoot on average, they're top shooters out of six hundred, they're shooting five ninety-fours to five nineties. She beat more than half of the precision shooters with her score. So next year, I told her it's up to her, her, her choice. I don't pressure the students, because I, she's also a top twenty-five student for next year. I could see it happening. And she has a very, very good shot of finishing number one in the nation next year. Wow. So we'll see. No pressure. So, thank you. I gave them a chance to talk, but you see how they're shy. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Mike Romero, really appreciate it. Great work. Keep up on it. Thank you. Now we're gonna move into special recognitions of Selma High School alumni. I'll let you introduce.
Yes, thank you. So as we've done before, we continue our tradition of honoring prestigious Selma High alumni, done amazing things in the world, a community. And as you walk into the front office at Selma High School, you'll see this wrapping that Mr. Lane has put out there to really showcase some of the most prestigious people who've ever come through the high school, including, for example, like a legendary Major League Baseball player, manager Bobby Cox, played for the New York Yankees, manager at Atlanta Braves, amongst others. Tonight, I'm honored to recognize one of those names on that wall. A remarkable alumni, Cheryl Nguyen. Cheryl immigrated from Taiwan to the United States when she was eight years old, attended Eric White Elementary, Roosevelt Junior High, and graduated from Selma High in nineteen ninety-two. After earning a bachelor's degree in communications from UCLA, she launched a successful career in marketing and the entertainment industry, working for Sony Pictures on films like Men in Black, Godzilla, and Stuart Little. When the dot-com boom began, she decided to move to the tech world and join the company Nvidia, the world's most valuable company valued at nearly three trillion dollars, next to companies like Apple and Microsoft. For over twenty-two years, she built new marketing teams, launched the company into new markets, and created an annual Nvidia GTC event, which is now the premier industry event for artificial intelligence, and the largest GPU developer conference in the world. She retired in twenty twenty-three at a nice young age as Vice President of Global Events and Creative Operations for Nvidia. Beyond her career, she is giving back to her community. She and her husband Tree have generously established a ten thousand dollar annual scholarship fund for Selma High School students with two five thousand dollar awards each year. The first award will be presented this Thursday at the Selma High Scholarship Awards. Please join me in thanking Cheryl for her generous contributions and inviting her to the front to say a few words as we present a special plaque in her honor.
Wow, that was quite the intro. Thank you. Thank you for having me here. I, I'm absolutely honored to be invited to speak about the scholarship that my husband and I started. We actually have a really similar background in that we both came here to this country as immigrants and ended up in communities where not a lot of people look like us or speak our language. In fact, for my part, my mom ran a motel here in town. She did everything from, you know, maintenance to housekeeping to laundry. She even took a second job at night at the, at Cho's Kitchen, just to make ends meet. So it was a hard childhood, not gonna lie. And, but you know, it, it was so important to us. She made sure we emphasized education, because that was the key to the American dream, right? That, that was the reason why we came here. And so today, you know, college graduate, my husband is a first-generation college graduate himself, and, you know, we just couldn't pass up, we couldn't squander the opportunity that our parents gave us through the sacrifices that they made. And, you know, for us, it just felt like it was time, you know? After a, a career, we've been very fortunate to be successful in our career, so we wanted We've been very fortunate to be successful in our career, so we wanted to make sure we give back. But, you know, beyond the, the drive that we had to go make something of ourselves, we actually had a lot of support from the community. And the reason why we did this was because this community gave back to us. You know, we made wonderful friends who, along with their parents, were so inclusive and kind to us. Some of them we're, we're still very close with today, they're sitting here at that table. But we also had incredible teachers, you know, in our communities. We, just to show, and some of the teachers are right here. Mr. Johnson is still teaching here, which is amazing. But just to, just to illustrate how incredible, though, let me give you an example of my, my first three years in this country at Eric White School. So when I immigrated here at the age of eight, I should have enrolled into third grade. But my mom held me back to second grade because I didn't know a word of English. And within, I would say, by the end of my fourth-grade year, I had caught up. And it was through the extraordinary efforts of the teachers, the teaching assistants, you know, strong encouragement from my mom, and hours and hours of American television, too, had something to do with that. But, but when I, when I got to the end of my fourth-grade year, my teacher, Mrs. Carolyn Pampa, she was determined to get me to skip fifth grade so I could catch up with students my own age. So she volunteered to tutor me three days a week for the entire summer. Right? Amazing. So I owe so much to her. And then when I got to sixth grade, my teacher, Mrs. Riley, I found out she was selected as a finalist for the Teacher in Space Program. And so she was supposed to, I mean, she could have gone to space, which, so you can imagine a young, impressionable me, three years into this country, thinking, wow, it is true what they say about this country. You know, anyone from anywhere can go from nothing to something remarkable. So, fast forward to today, my husband and I have been very fortunate to be successful in our careers, and now that we have the means to do so, it's, we do want to give back. And, and so I have to say, launching a scholarship is, seems very daunting, you know, if you don't know where to start, and you're only just dealing with the vast ocean of the internet for clues. Thankfully, I, I wanted to thank Mr. Johnson again, because we had a very serendipitous conversation. And once again, just like in high school, he inspired me and pointed me in the right direction, and that was in the direction of Mr. John Marie Loving. She made things so easy. And I know I came in hot, I was very late to the game, but I was determined to make a difference starting this year, and man, she made it happen. So, kudos to her, and thank you, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Loving, for also sitting on the selection committee. We, it was hard. I mean, you guys have a lot of great students here. It's, it was amazing. We had twenty-eight very qualified, very well-qualified applicants, they're amazing. And so it was a very hard choice, but two really stood out to us. And that was Anai de Jesus and Elizabeth Franzen. And they're exceptionally young ladies, they demonstrated character, drive in the face of adversity, and I, my husband and I just can't be more proud to support them in their journey as they continue education. So thank you very much for having me, and I hope you guys got a sense of what a wonderful experience I had at this school.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl, for visiting us here in Selma Unified School District. We really appreciated your contribution to this community, and you set the example and inspired our teachers, students, and everyone. Thank you again, thank you to you and your husband for your contribution to our students. Thank you again. So, now we're gonna move into the big celebration.
Yeah, so thank you all for still hanging with us here, and please, families, if you can wait just a little bit before we take a pause and celebrate, we've got a special recognition of our world champions, Selma High School Percussion Band. So, for the first time in Selma Unified history, the Selma High Percussion Ensemble earned first place at the twenty twenty-five WGI World Championships in the Percussion Scholarship Concert A Class, bringing home the title after an unforgettable performance in Dayton, Ohio. Under the direction of co-band, uh, co-band directors Alex Lima and Regina Jimenez, the Ensemble's journey to the world stage began months ago with rigorous rehearsals, statewide competitions. After winning first place at both the WGI Temecula Regional in February and the West Power Regional in Rancho Cucamonga in March, the group qualified for the world finals, earning top honors on the biggest stage in scholastic percussion. We would not be here without their coaching, without the dedication by both students and parents, and without our board's focus and direction on passing critical items that allowed them to go to Daytona. Tools, transportation, et cetera, that made all this happen. I'd like now to invite everyone here to stand up. We're gonna move over to the cafeteria, you can walk in through the back door there, and we're gonna watch the World Championship Percussion Band. We're not able to see it because we couldn't go there, but they, they came here to us, and we'll be watching them right now. The board meeting will go live in there when we get in, so let's head on over.
All right, we ready?
This is our standstill percussion profession. We teach kids, also learn a whole other five-minute movement throughout the season, which is why we start our progression in our, um, our Germany in August. This is the second year that we've established this group, it works mostly during the school day, so this is an option for those kids that cannot stay after school. You know, the band, the, oh, there, there's so much after school. We had, this is a, a year, we wanted to make this out, we had very emotional, this whole, this was all done during the class time, on top of all the responsibility that we do the program. Thank you. I can't, I can't say this enough, it's a journey. Do you have anything?
No, um, this is a journey that didn't start this year. It's a journey that I just started, um, eight, yeah, eight years ago. We found out that we were gonna be working together, uh, here in Selma. It was that night, actually, that we found out. Uh, we went and sat in the library at Fresno State and started scratching out on napkins, what we wanted to do. And that's, that's where it started. And then it came here, we had a very supportive administrative team, and it's been almost a decade of hard work, coordination, growing the program, growing skill sets, funding, and then, of course, the funding, uh, and then of course the support of our administrative team looking at us and saying, you guys are crazy, but we're here for it and, and helping us along. Uh, so we really couldn't do it without, without all of you. We couldn't do it without the supportive community, uh, and we couldn't do it without the community.
As a token of our gratitude, um, the medal that's currently held on right now, um, for WTI, who denied our, 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 and we had to do it twice. We had to prove ourselves to our local circuit. We took the gold in Pennsylvania, UAA this year with our concert profession and then we traveled all the way to Ohio and I've been told by the chapter president of the art society that we have to put Salma on the map. So, I don't know. But, uh, we have appreciation and support, um, particularly thanks to comments and that are all members of the government. And so it's been a gratitude and thank you for sending us on this wonderful experience, um, which is truly appreciated. We couldn't do it without the parents, the supportive parents, the sisters, um, our students, our parents, all of our, I think so much for this wonderful journey and I can't forget some of our staff members that have helped along the way, um, Trish Dowd and Miss Prima, who is now calling us, Stephanie, who is down in the middle of school, she's down in the middle of school, um, the fashion department. By my heart, once again, thank you very, very, very much. It is truly an honor to represent Salma and I can't wait to go back again someday.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you to families who sit up with us all the time and give you the guys a reason. Thank you, families, you guys are amazing. We got some food back here, refreshments, cookies. They take them all to celebrate our little post here. We're trying to, tomorrow, and now, like we think I never made it fall here.
We are a community united in our commitment to every student's success.
We provide a nurturing environment where students thrive academically and socially.
From innovative instruction to valuable enrichment programs, we offer-
A wide range of opportunities for every student to excel.
We inspire minds and shape futures.
Together we are-
Together-
We are Salma Unified.
We are Salma Unified.
Together, we are Salma Unified!
Yeah!
All right, we are back in session. Public inputs, member of the public wishing to address the Board of Education on matters within the jurisdiction of the board but not on this agenda may do so during the public comments period for up to three minutes. Public comment on a specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public records, please state your name. Do we have any public comments this evening, Mr.?
Yes, I do. I have three here. I'll start with the first one, Janessa Sebrian.
Hi, my name's Janessa Sebrian and I have my daughter Aria who goes to Garfield, I mean, she goes to Roosevelt, sorry. She's in sixth grade. She does have autism and a few other mental disorders and behavioral issues and along with mood disorders. I feel like the staff as a whole, they say, you know, that they do, that there like right now is their mental health week. And as a parent, I did reach out to them and let them know that my daughter has made comments that are very hurtful as a parent to hear and it's due to bullying, sorry, at school. And it's not just done by students, it's done by staff as well. I'm currently going through a process with them about a week ago, she was threatened by a student and a staff member was encouraging that boy to fight my daughter. And her name is, let me see here, she's a softball coach, Miss Kelly, you know, Miss Kaitlyn Cardenas. And I feel like that's, you know, very hurtful behavior, especially with an autistic student and you're trying to have her get beat up at school. I waited a whole week to hear from Miss Doyle. I barely heard back from her today via Parent Square and I've been like calling and asking and I'm not happy with what's being done there. They constantly pick on her about dress code. I try to abide and get every single thing that they say and they constantly pick and pick and say it's something different, making it extremely hard for me to find anything for her. Let me see, there was a vape issue that was going on for months. They tried to offer my daughter that to buy at school, the vape pens, brought it up to principal. I'm still unaware of what's going on with that and it seems like they don't trust her word just because she does have disabilities and that's something that I find very disgusting and not okaying. The staff has no patience for students that do have mental illnesses or mood disorders and they continue to argue and yell at her. And they should be educated on how to approach these students and deal with them as arguing with a bipolar student isn't going to get you anywhere. Not saying that it's okay, but if I'm doing my job as a parent to try and do my best with controlling myself, I feel like staff should be able to do that as well. They don't report things that are happening to parents. They don't care, you know, about anything like helping them at all. I had to go through Turning Point to help her and get her outside sources that are going to advocate for her and to stick up for her. She was told off by a parent on campus and there was nothing done and I was there witnessing it. She's been punched in the head and nothing was done and I witnessed that myself. They have no compassion and no fairness and I feel like it's honestly a whole district issue and not just at Roosevelt. I will say that it's something that does need to be talked about more and along with the police staff as well. You know, she's been crying and saying that she's not safe every single day and there's nothing that's being done. So just as a parent, I need that, you know, for her.
Thank you for your concern, board heard your concern and will review your concern. Thank you so much.
And I can have our staff here, Janessa, if you'd like, to meet with Mrs. Vayor, Karina or Alice here, if you guys won't mind, one of you guys kind of taking out. Up to you. Okay, next up, Julio Diaz.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Good evening, everyone. Hopefully ladies have a happy Mother's Day. Autism is a, well, first of all, let me start off by apologizing to Miss Santos at Garfield Elementary School. I had an incident with her May 5th and I kind of jumped the gun because I was looking at the situation from a different angle. Not making excuses for myself or my behavior, but I have apologized to her and I just want to make it publicly known that I'm apologizing to her because I'll eat my crow if I was able to call her out on something in front of everyone, then I will apologize in front of everyone, you know? But autism is a thing that with a meeting I had, or actually a positive meeting I had with Mr. Gomes, it's a, I don't want to call it a trial and error process, but there's a lot of things that we don't know as parents and obviously you guys don't know as educators. The biggest thing for me is communication now, communication. I've got a lot of answers just by merely communicating and Mr. Gomes taking the first step and calling me in for a meeting. I wish this would have been done a long time ago, but hey, we're here now, we've passed that bridge. He opened up my eyes to a lot of things and I just wanted him to know that I appreciate the communication, you know, for my daughter's sake. Obviously, there's always things we could all work on and try to make it better, but just be more positive and more vigilant as a staff, as aides, be constantly vigilant of what goes on, not just with autistic students, but with aides also, or any student actually, right? Because if I hear one of my football players, one of my jujitsu students talk about, oh, so and so did something, or I heard something bad, then I'm going to take action. I'm not going to get to sit on the sidelines and wait for somebody else to do something. I'm going to do or say something. Well, actually, I should just do something, not, I mean, say something, not do something. But sometimes action needs to be taken and be the person that makes a difference in a child's life. Be that person that I want to grow up to be like that person. Like, I try to be like my head football coach that, I mean, to this day, I still keep in contact with him and I aspire to be more like him as a coach because he made such an impact on my life. And you guys as board members, administrators, like, just be more vigilant, be more aware of who you're hiring. It's a really touchy subject because all these kids up here performing this play which brought joy to my heart watching them, but my daughter isn't at that level yet. And with the help of, hopefully of the district and the teachers, we'll get there someday and, you know, then I'll be up here giving everybody their flowers, you know, instead of being the resistance, as I was called. I'm not out to get anybody in particular, because I've heard that too. I just want what's best.
Sir, can you wrap that up? The three minutes is up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm wrapping it up. I'm not, you know, see, I tried to be nice and now you're taking my time away from me. But when I was being short, you see what I'm saying? Like, obviously, you know, I'm trying to give you guys your flowers and you're cutting me off, but thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Diaz, for having a meeting with our superintendent and heard your concern. Thank you.
And last up, Debbie Fidor.
Hello, my name is Debbie. I just wanted to get up here and say that I'm here every meeting, every meeting, mainly just to support my husband, but I think you guys are doing a good job. I do think you're doing a good job. Lately, here on social media, you guys are getting hammered a lot. My husband gets hammered on a weekly basis. And the best thing I can say to you and anybody is to get to know these people because most of them, all of you guys actually, you know, sometimes there's some bad apples, but there's a lot of good ones. And if you take the time to get to know each and every one of them, they're really good. I mean, can't even tell you the sacrifices that they make. They're there for a lot of things a lot of people don't see. You know, we've got some keyboard warriors that don't come to the meetings. And can't always believe everything you see on social media because I know that all these people are really good and they really do have your children's best interest at heart. And I know this for a fact, you know, we have kids in the system that have some issues, but you know what? You guys are doing a good job. I just think that sometimes you don't get to hear that and I appreciate you guys. I wish you were here when my oldest was here. Anyways, you're doing good.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
All right, we're going to move into the discussion and action items. Superintendent, education matter KC twenty-four story.
Yeah, thank you. So last week, KCEE twenty-four featured one of Selma High's special education classes in their weekly education matter series. Students in Jamie Marash class were reading the book The Time Machine and to better understand the material, they created their own movie adaptation. The class hosted a special premiere here in the dining hall with students and administrators in attendance. And, you know, then when stuff's on the news, we like to bring it to you and the public. These are great things that are happening by great teachers, educators out there and students, so let's go show it.
The classic novel, The Time Machine, is not the easiest novel to read.
In tonight's Education Matters, Juanita Stevenson shows us how a Fresno County special education teacher used movie making to help her students understand the science fiction novel.
It was their day to shine, walking the red carpet for the premiere of their movie, The Time Tangle, based on the classic H.G. Wells novel, The Time Machine.
I want you all to hold up this book, just this book, The Time Machine.
It is a project students in Jamie Marash's special education class at Selma High School started last fall. They were reading the book, The Time Machine.
I felt that that was kind of a complicated book to read and so I decided that there might be a better way for us to engage with that book for the students to understand. And so we came up with a movie.
Marash teaches young people with extensive learning needs. The students are part of a program with the Office of the Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. They attend classes at Selma High and take general ed courses. Their teacher is always looking for creative ways to help them learn.
We wrote a script for a movie and it's called The Time Tangle and it's very closely similar to The Time Machine, but it's more fun and more interactive and it's in a way the students can understand and relate to the materials.
With a little help from Chat GPT, they wrote a script, made the costumes and built the props, including a time machine. Marash says her students were involved in every aspect of movie making.
The learning, the engagement, the reciprocity, learning each other, how to be good friends, how to sit, how to listen, how to do what they're being told or being asked to do.
The day the movie premiered was a big day on campus. Family, friends, teachers and staff filled the audience, the young actors and parents seeing their hard work on screen.
It was great seeing him in the movie, being included in something for school and that he wanted to do it because it's really hard to get him to do things.
For Selma High, it was the opportunity for people to see their practice of inclusion in action, a chance for other students to interact with special needs young people every day.
Technically, these students are part of the Fresno County Superintendent of Schools program, but they're Selma High School Bears is what they are. That's how we see them as an admin team and that's how our students and teachers see them as well.
For Education Matters, I'm Juanita Stevenson, KC twenty-four, local news that matters.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. That's awesome.
Yeah, great stuff happening and sometimes we have to bring it out here just because it's hard to uncover. There's so many great things and great people out there doing really good stuff for kids.
Yeah, great, great work by the teachers and everything. Thank you. Moving into the end service, the school accountability, report cards, SARC, Strive Academy.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I am bringing to you the SARC or School Accountability Report Card for Strive Academy. This is an annual site-based report to parents that includes student achievement results, site demographics and expenditures. Strive Academy is our community day school that is currently located at the Washington Adult School Campus and for the twenty twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year had nine students enrolled. I'm requesting approval for the publication of this report.
All right. There's a motion already, is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. Moving into item number two, approval of a new vendor, Park Place Tech.
Yes, this is a new vendor approval request for Park Place Technologies. Our IT department currently uses Dell support for software and hardware issues. Park Place offers the same level of support as Dell with a lower cost of approximately $10,000. The request is to approve the one-year support contract with Park Place Technologies for a little over $35,000 to be paid out of the general funds to replace the Dell support contract.
Thank you. Mark, do you have any question?
Is it the look on my face or?
I know you work at the tech.
I do have a question. Mark would be so kind of being up here.
Yeah, Mark needs to be answered.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand this. So this is a different vendor for support. On the machines that we do get, don't they have per warranty support on them?
This is for our server environment. It's for commercial. So Park Place is similar in hardware and software support. The main difference is Dell focuses more on hardware sales. Park Place offers, only focuses on hardware and software support. That's their main line of business.
Okay.
So the difference is they offer the same hardware, software support, but where I think Park Place exceeds, Dell is in their SLA. They have a twenty-four by seven, three sixty-five and within four hours of a ticket, a part or a person will be here. Also, the experience of the techs, the average tenure of all the engineers are twelve-plus years and they come directly from Dell. So along with that, a lower cost, of course, but overall, it meets or exceeds hardware replacement and software support.
So this is going to be for the server side?
Server side, it's for our server farm, so it covers hardware, software. And some of the things that we house is our eight student information systems, our financial systems and all our security and software, video cameras, things of that nature.
So is this going to be just servers or is it going to be servers and SAN or is it going to be, what are we looking at in total?
So our environments, it's hyper-converged, so we have our data, our compute and storage all into one, so it's a hyper-converged, so it's all virtual. So it covers everything within that stack.
So just to understand, so this company will be able to give us the same level support with a four-hour window?
Yes.
And it'll be $10,000 less than Dell?
Yes.
So for those of you who don't understand tech speak, essentially what the servers and all that stuff, the backend that holds all the data and runs all the infrastructure that your computers connect to for the districts, for your parents at home, this is the computers that sit in the closet or in, well, they look like closets for the better. That's the closest analogy I can come to. And this is for supportive of that. So if something goes off, something goes down, that's, that's critical. We need to have that up and running. So a four-hour window is a pretty good time to get a tech out here. Okay.
Yes, the SLA was pretty impressive for me. One thing where I think Park Place exceeds Dell is you have to escalate a lot of calls with Dell. With Park Place, since their only focus is service, their SLA is four hours for parts and service for any critical issues or outages, so that really helps our district in terms of bringing systems back on and faster.
Now, just one more question, because I noticed, I noticed you said virtualization. So they're going to support the virtual software servers as well or are they, or the hypervisors and all that, just something separate?
No, they cover the hypervisor, which is our V center, which manages all our virtual servers, yes.
All right, so that's the whole enchilada.
Yes, hardware where they live on, the software that we use to install, manage and run all our servers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think, is there any other question from the board? If not, may I get a motion to accept this item?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. Moving into renew approval of a comprehensive school safety plans.
Yes, this final item is a request to approve the renewal of our site comprehensive school safety plans. These plans are done annually around this time of the year for the following school year, so these plans are in anticipation of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The plans are written at the site level in partnership with families and are developed with strategies and policies related to safety aspects and emergency procedures. New this year is the addition of the instructional continuity plan. This plan intends to ensure that all students can access instruction during a natural disaster or emergency. So all districts had until July 1st of 2025 to add that to their comprehensive school safety plans and that is included in our plans. So I am requesting approval for the twenty-five, twenty-six comprehensive school safety plans.
Is that for all the schools?
Yes, that's correct. So if the district has already approved the safe plans, then they have to create an addendum to add the instructional continuity plan. And so for us, it just fell at the right time where we were able to add it beforehand.
And all the principles involved in this?
Yes, and so every school site has a separate safety plan and so it's started at the, at the school level, so the site administrators are the ones that write it, of course, with collaboration of our Director of Student Services. Then it goes and has to be approved by, by their school site council as well.
Thank you. Is there any question from the board? All right, seems like we needed updates every year, yeah?
Yes, that's correct.
Always need that. So do we get any inputs from the PD or anything?
Yes, they are also part of the educational partners that every school site has to reach out to, to ensure that we're in alignment with, with the, with the community in our city.
Is there a motion to accept this item?
I have a motion to accept the safety plan.
All right, we have a.
I'll second, I'll second it.
All right, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, moving into facilities, revisiting of a current and a future project.
Yes, thank you. So as part of our commitment to maintaining facilities that support student achievement, safety and programmatic growth, the district is currently engaged in a comprehensive review of the facility's master plan. The plan is about four years old at this point and so it was pertinent to go and revisit all of the information that was included in the plan and ensure that it was in line with the district's current priorities. And so we re-engaging with Teter or Techs to make sure that it's updated. And so just wanted to kind of bring that forward and let you know that we are constantly reviewing and making sure that it's in line with our current priorities. And so this is just an information-only item.
I heard that our pool's going to be open for summer, that going to be finished?
Yes, they actually filled it this morning, so, yeah, we're pretty excited about that. I got some pictures bright and early this morning with the pool getting filled up, so it's an exciting moment for us in, in the facilities and meetings world.
All right, any questions from the board? All good, all lined up for this summer? Did you work on those projects?
Yes, yes, we have. So the list that was attached to the board item is just a list of our current and future projects, just to kind of like what's on our radar. So some are, are close to being completed that are on the list still and then there's others that are probably further down the line, but just kind of a summary of what we have on our plate.
Got you, got you. All right, there's no questions, may I get a motion for this item? Oh, we don't need, never mind.
It's information.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, we're going to move into the business services then.
Yes.
Resolution FY twenty-five dash forty-nine?
Thank you. So in collaboration with VROP, we, we assess the materials required for the VROP pathways. So Selma Unified District has identified the need for a hydro CNC machine and at the same time, Selma High School's manufacturing shop has determined that one of its two plasma cutters is surplus equipment and no longer necessary for instructional purposes. So in line with the district's policy and relevant regulations, we are proposing to transfer and sell this surplus equipment to Kings Canyon Unified School District. This transfer will help optimize resource, resources and ensure the continued educational use of the equipment by a neighboring district. So we're asking for your approval on this so that the proceeds that we have from selling this equipment will help offset the cost of the hydro CNC machine.
Yeah, I think it's a great move since we already have one and the other one's Yeah, I think it's a great move, since we already have one, and the other one's going to be hydro, so.
It'll complement the program well.
The V R O Ps is supporting us on that?
Yes, and so that's one of the great things of having Fabrizio support through this because of his connections and his understanding of other school districts and their, their program needs. And so he kind of linked us together and, and helped us go through this. So, yeah, we, we definitely lucky to have him for that.
Perfect. Any questions from the board? May I get a motion for this item? All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. Second item is a Kingsburger Truck Center.
Thank you. So the district is requesting to purchase a used vehicle to purchase, excuse me, to support the operations at the Transportation Department mechanic shop. As our fleet continues to grow and age, the need for reliable service vehicles dedicated to the shop has become increasingly important. And so the mechanic truck that we currently have is aging and no longer meets the operational demands of our department. There's frequent, frequent repairs and limited functionality that are impacting our efficiency to go and help our other departments and repair their vehicles. So it's really important that our vehicle from the mechanic shop is, is up to par. So it's just a replacement of their vehicle, their service vehicle.
All right, is there any questions on the board?
I forgot to mention it. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right, so one of the first questions I have, because they have a few, is when we're talking a mechanic truck, does it have a standard bed? Or is it a, the modified one where you put tools and everything in?
Yes, and so we did get some comparison quotes for the, the base model truck, but with the add-ons that we have to have that are specific to the mechanic shop. You know, that's where we ended with the Kingsburg Truck Center, and it, and it does have the, I don't know, for lack of better toolboxes. And it'll have the lift gate, I believe, I mean, oh, Tommy gate, and then other accessories that are needed for the, the functionality of the mechanics.
Okay, and so the, so the other question I have is going to be on, on pricing, because that's a ten-year-old vehicle. Is there going to be any type of warranty on it, or what are we looking at comparable to? What was the new truck pricing? Because I know you said you looked at it, but what are we looking at in difference?
Uh, yeah, I, sorry, I don't have those with me tonight, but in terms of the, the warranty, we do have a limited warranty, because as you mentioned, it is used. But our mechanics did check, verify this vehicle and, and deemed it, you know, that it was reliable and it's going to, you know, be beneficial for the department. We don't have, we don't drive a lot of miles in Selma, so it's just more so of having all the features and capabilities to help support maintaining the other vehicles.
So you answered my third question about if the mechanics took a look at it, so that's good?
Yeah.
So they looked at and they verified it's, it's?
Yes, yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have an idea how often these are used, or these vehicles are used?
I, I couldn't give you specifics, but I'll give you examples of, of what they, they use them for. And I do have Renee here tonight, if, if you want more than what I'm going to offer you now. But if a bus is broken down, or it has a blown-out tire, or whatever it might be, or it could be our white fleet, so maintenance vehicles or other things like that, if they have any issues that are broken down, the mechanics will utilize this vehicle to go help them get back on the road. And so they do need to have a, a service truck that has any tools they might need to help support our white fleet and our buses.
This year, for example, what would you say? Doesn't have to be accurate, doesn't round about. How many times has a bus broken down? How many times have, have they had to go out and, and help someone?
That's Renee.
I think they turned it off.
Good evening, board, members and cabinet, Mr. Gomes. Yeah, the vehicle stays stationary for most of the year. The only time it actually leaves the garage is to assist anybody within the district if their vehicles break down. We've had multiple breakdowns where these vehicles have been utilized, either to push the, the school buses out of the roadway, so then that way they can service them. But to answer your question, I would say this year, since I've been there, I would count about twenty bus breakdowns where that vehicle was utilized. But it's not only utilized just for the Transportation Department, it's just used district-wide.
Okay, that brings up another question. So, so if it's used district-wide, what's, what's the mechanic truck going to be used district-wide for?
For any breakdowns, if there's, let's say, for instance, we have white fleet, or we have maintenance vehicles that break down and they need assistance, a flat tire. So the reason that that truck is so important is because it's going to have a specific, like, compressor aboard it, and it's going to have a lift towards the rear. The, the actual lift will be, the tailgate will be an actual lift. It's just going to have all the accessories that I would need for any type of breakdown that we would have to assist in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other question? May I get a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right. Human Resources, approve twenty-two thousand five summer session MOU between the C S E A Chapter two thirty-one and the Selma Unified School District.
Yeah, so this is a MOU between C S E A Chapter two thirty-one and the Selma Unified School District for the twenty-two thousand five summer session. So we met with the C S E A Chapter, and we developed this MOU. It's very similar to the MOU that was used for last summer. So that the MOU outlines the positions that will be offered, days and hours to be worked, compensation, and the selection process for employees for the summer. The conditions of the MOU are the same as the twenty-two thousand four summer school for staffing dependent upon enrollment, and the hourly salaries for positions are the same as during the regular school year. So we are seeking approval of the board for this MOU.
All right, any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to accept.
All right, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right. Approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven student-certificated classified management calendars.
So, yep, we're still in twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and now we're talking about the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So we're asking for the board to approve the school calendars for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. In preparation, the calendar for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, a survey was sent out and shared with parents, certificated, classified, and administrators, so all of our staff. We received four hundred and fifty-two responses to the survey. Thirty-three percent of those that returned the survey were parents. Twenty-five percent were classified staff, and thirty-eight percent were certificated, and only four percent were administrative or management. Of the two options that we presented, the second option with the start date of August eleventh and then an end date of June fourth, and that would be August eleventh of twenty twenty-six and June fourth of twenty twenty-seven, this was the first choice by a vast majority of respondents, with sixty-six percent choosing this option. So presented to you was all the calendars, the student, classified, certificated, and management calendars. So seeking approval on those for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Got it. All right, is there any questions from the board? If not, may I get a motion to accept it as presented? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into considered agenda. Item listed under the considered agendas are considered to be a routine and are acted on a board of trustee in one motion. There is no discussion of these items. Before the board, or on this, a member of the board, staff, or a public request a specific item, be discussed and are removed from the considered agenda. It is understood that the administration's recommended approval on a considered items. Each item on a considered agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to be having considered and a full adopted and recommended. Any questions on the considered agenda?
I have a comment. It's not a question. Under number seven, which is donations, I just want to say kudos to Selma. You guys are awesome. And it's not just this time, it's every single time, right? There's always donations, it seems like. And each and every one of those people that donated for our students, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I want, I want to pull employee resignations, number four and eight.
All right, we're going to pull out item four and eight?
A.
A?
Four A, sorry.
Yeah.
Four A, okay.
You can vote on everything.
Four A, and we will vote on the left, on the rest of the items. May I have a motion to approve the considered agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, let's discuss about a item four A.
Four A, I just don't agree with it, so that's why I'm already on it.
What's that?
I said I, I just don't agree with it, a portion of it, so.
What are we talking about again? Four A or seven A?
Four A.
Four A, under the employee resignation, certificated.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Gomes.
Just vote on it.
The item four A, she has it.
Yeah, and if you guys would like, like in the future, getting it early on, so you guys can see those, discuss it. We can talk about it right now. If there's a specific reason for it, it's up to you or not, and then you can just go ahead and straight vote for it, but.
Want me to mention the actual thing that I don't agree with?
Sure.
Okay. The placement of the thirty-ninth month reemployment list.
What happened?
On disc.
Well, I didn't hear what you were saying. You came out real soft.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the, gosh, I need to put my glasses back on.
Oh, got you.
On the, the placement of the thirty-ninth month reemployment list.
Is there a specific question that I can answer for that?
I just don't agree with.
Okay.
Okay, just, just you are not agreeing on it, okay? So we could leave that item out, or?
Yeah, you can leave that one out.
Bring it back?
But you have to vote on it, don't you?
Well, no, we have to vote on it, but that specific one, she can say no to, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So that's, okay, I remember this one.
So you're voting for everyone else on there?
Uh, Mr. Gomes, can I?
Yeah.
Add a little, so in the thirty-ninth month rehire, we are following the labor laws on, in our state ed codes on the placement of an employee on a thirty-ninth month rehire because of their timeout of the district, the use of their leaves, and that they've exhausted those leaves. So that was the reason for the placement of the individual.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
So we're going to vote on the rest of the item, accept that, and?
I thought we already voted on it.
We have to vote on the, on the one, specific one for?
Okay.
That she's pulling.
So can I get a motion to, on item four A?
So is this to place them on the thirty-nine, or is this to, well, it's already done, right? Or is it, what are we voting on?
She has the right to vote and consent to go against it.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're going to vote individual?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to roll call.
We're not taking, the list is as presented here.
That is correct.
Got you.
Yeah.
So we're accepting it as presented, or we're accepting it?
It's as presented, so.
So I want to know what I'm voting on specifically, because it's like, I'm voting on whether I accept it the way it is, or I don't accept it the way it is.
The way it is, accepting or not accepting it.
Okay.
So we're going to, by each roll call, are you accepting, we, as is presented, Mr. Medina? Yes or no?
Trying to remember all the, the details. Hang on a second. I'm going to go now.
What's that?
No.
No, okay. All right, Mrs. Dorte? Mrs. Kessler?
No.
Mr. Fedora?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So we have three yeses and two no's, and motion carries. All right, we're going to move into the board reports. Before we do that, we have any, do you guys have any reports from high school? Is this, you are, you're graduating, right? Do you want to say any few words to the board?
Yes, I will. Um, I just want to say thank you again for letting me be a part of the board, I guess you could say. And it's taught me a lot to speak up for myself and really just get my voice to be heard. And especially with Alyssa being here, it's a good representation to the school and just to make sure that everybody knows that they could do it and also that they're included as well.
Thank you. Thank you. You did an awesome job, and best luck after you. Are you going?
Thank you.
University, or?
Yeah, I'm going to Fresno State.
Fresno State?
Yeah.
Okay, good luck. All right, we're looking forward with the new representative. We start with Mr. Medina.
Oh, it feels like forever since our last meeting. There's been Mother's Day. That was fun. I got to do a lot of neat things there, and I know there's been proms going on. It's getting close. Everyone's getting antsy. The students are ready to graduate, and the parents are worrying about, you know, what colors they're going to go to if they don't know already, and getting set to have them leave the nest. But all in all, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Aside from that, there's a whole bunch of public events coming up all over the place. So look at your local calendars and get ready for that. And then, then we had that bear thing, which was down the street from where I live at.
That's a mystery.
That was a mystery, where it came from and how it got here. Because we're like, what, seven cities away from the nearest mountain? But other than that, there isn't a whole lot for me to report on.
All right, Mrs. Dorte?
Yes, I have attended many events, but I just want to thank the administration for the event this morning. For the first breakfast, teacher appreciation day, it was well orchestrated, the venue, the food, and the support for our teachers. So thank you for doing that first, yeah.
That's great.
And looking forward to the classified breakfast.
I won't miss that one.
Thank, thank you. All right, Mrs. Kessler?
Well, I haven't done too much since my surgery, but, but I've done a couple of things. I've attended the Mrs. McDougall's kindergarten annual Mother's Day celebration. That was very nice. And I attended the Selma High baseball game honoring the past players. That was nice. I saw Mr. Gomes there. He was actually in front of me. I didn't even know he was in front of me. So, and I also want to watch, want to wish our, our certificated teachers a happy teacher's day, week, month, whatever you want to do. But I want to thank you for, for, for your dedication to our students. And Alyssa, you're going to be missed. You have been a joy to work with here on the board. And last but not least, thank you to Randy Israelean, I don't know if he's still here, for giving me my ride today. But I, I wanted to.
He's somewhere on campus, I can assure you.
But I wanted to thank him very much for doing that for me today. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Fedora?
Oh, yeah, we got a list. Alyssa, thank you for your service. And Alyssa, welcome, which is kind of cool. We don't have to remember, you know.
I won't be able to forget that name.
We look forward to big things from you in the future. It's going to be fun to hear what, what you accomplish. So what did I do? Went to the top twenty-five dinner. That was, that was awesome. It's fun to see that top of our class. All of our kids are fantastic, in my opinion. Went to CTA dinner, the fentanyl awareness thing that we had at Heartland, where the police chief, the sheriff, the DA was there. Pretty good arts gala, been to that. That, that was fantastic. And like Mark said, I don't know, whoever had a bear in Selma on their twenty-two thousand five bingo card, you win, right? The teacher appreciation breakfast this morning, that was fantastic. And thanks to the staff, too, for putting on the aprons and serving. That was cool, man. Thank you to everybody who's worked so hard, the students especially, right? You guys are the ones doing the, the heavy lifting. Thank you to you, to your families, who have supported you in what you're doing. So we have Alyssa, Lonnie Perez is already gone, Casey Berry. Thank you, guys. Look forward to seeing you come up. Anyway, I could go on forever and ever, so just, it's thank you all, every single one of you. If I didn't mention you, you should have been mentioned. That's all I got.
Alright, well, from me, same thing, top twenty-five students was awesome. Very proud and seeing those students, they're going to the universities and a lot of them's going different programs, really make me feel good and proud of Selma. And adult school fentanyl drugs awareness, that was really awesome. I learned a lot on it, actually. I wish we could do it in high school before the summer. And we need to work with the DA and try to get them before the summer because that was amazing, that little part of the fentanyl, how can't kill the students? That was amazing, and I learned a lot from it. So, nothing else from me, and good luck to Alyssa and welcome the new one. And let's move into the superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you. So this month, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Please join me in thanking those who do so much for our students who need the mental health support. This little green ribbon, thank you Christie for bringing this out here to us, is the international symbol of mental health awareness, and I provided one for every board member. So thank you, and let's keep awareness going. I wanna take a moment to highlight an important initiative we've gone underway. Mr. Zora, you just mentioned the fentanyl awareness campaign that we've been on. We hosted a fentanyl awareness assembly at Heartland. Where students learned about the dangers of fentanyl. Also, in our most recent district newspaper, this is the April edition, there is in Spanish and English a video that it's in a QR code, and families have linked to it. I've heard great feedback from it. So went to, every single resident in Selma was able to go into that video. It's an ABC thirty video that's called Killer High, The Silent Crisis, which provides critical information on the dangers of fentanyl. So even if they're not able to come to the school, you can see it from your home on a phone, which is really good information. The video tells you so much about fentanyl and the dangers. And so families can easily access the video by scanning the QR code included in the newspaper. And so this is something that we can, again, provide in futures, but it's great that it's going to every home. We also shared the video through our parent square. We will continue our efforts with additional fentanyl awareness assemblies scheduled at the high school also. And next up, we celebrated our certificated staff at the certified appreciation breakfast this morning. Thank you, those who showed up to support and put an apron. Thank you administrators for doing that, it was fantastic. Thank you board members. We received lots of feedback from staff on how wonderful it was. We will hold the classified celebration during classified appreciation week, which will be Friday, May twenty-third. See you guys there. Also, best of luck to all our students, talking about heavy lifting that they do, taking the state academic assessment CASP test, not easy. I know it's many hours of many days that you are testing. We appreciate your hard work during this time, it's very critical, thank you. And lastly, there are so many school events happening between now and the end of the year. It's been happening already, including elementary grade promotions, academic awards, graduations, high school scholarship awards, choir band concerts, and much, much more. Please check your child's school calendar on their school's website for the most up-to-date information. You can also visit District of Ink Calendar, selmausd.org. Lots of great stuff going on till here, till the very end of the year, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, that's really great. I think we're gonna move into the closed sessions. But thank you again in attending this meeting, and have a great rest of the week, and best luck of everyone. Thank you.